Good evening and welcome. The Town of Los Gatos Council Meeting of October 1st, 2024 is now called to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Ista?
Here.
Councilmember Annie?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hudes?
Here.
Mayor Badami?
Here. At this time, we're going to move to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to lead us. Please stand. Thank you. Our next item are consent items, and this is considered routine town business and could be approved by one motion. Any member of the council can pull an item for discussion. See any council member raising their hands to do that. Members of the public may also comment on a consent item, and I do have a speaker card from Leaf ago. Please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you for gathering this evening on the 1st of October. And the agenda tonight looks like one of the briefest council meetings we're going to have, so I'll be very short, I promise, although I am going to come up 17 times to talk about different issues. Consent item number three, the Shannon Road Bike and Pedestrian Pathway Development. How can we, after two years, be making a fifth amendment to the consulting contract and after finally accepting comments from citizens during the town's neighborhood meeting on Shannon Road about a year ago? The project's cost in this...
If there's interest in pulling this consent item, I just wanted to reiterate that there'll be one time for public comment, and so the public comment can either be now or it can be if and when the item is pulled from the consent calendar.
I don't see that anybody wanted to pull it, so, okay. Proceed, Leaf.
Continue, okay. This project, which is less than a third of a mile long, is costing over $2.7 million so far, and already a very expensive product just for a bike lane sidewalk improvement. And our town has a sad history of contracting with poorly performing consultants for our budget in the past, the housing element, and so forth. All requiring amendments to both the work they provided and to the payment and timelines for their work or replacing the consultant to start over has been expensive, time-consuming. Please consider these historic blemishes and the cost for new consulting contracts, for example, a senior services committee, a community center, and let's truly manage, as the council and as the town staff, let's truly manage the process and require accountability for yourselves, town staff, and the consultant that is hired. So, thank you.
Thank you. You don't have to go far. You're going to be next when I come to verbal communications. I'm taking the cards in order, so... Okay, all right. All right, so now I'm going to go back to council. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve consent items, the complete set of consent items.
Have a second? Member Moore?
Second.
All right, I'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Right, we're moving on to verbal communications, and this is where members of the public are welcome to address the town council on any matter not listed on the agenda. I have speaker cards, and the first one, surprise, is Leaf ago. I see somebody coming forward. Please hand your card into the town clerk. If anybody else wishes to speak, make sure you fill out a speaker card and hand it to the town clerk.
Again, thank you, and I appreciate all the work you're doing. I'm speaking as a longtime town resident and not representing any group, as I spoke earlier. I was not representing any group. Regarding the Los Gatos Lodge project on Los Gatos Road, it is Los Gatos-Saratoga Road. It has been so positive to see the developer Summit Homes, the Los Gatos-Saratoga Union High School District, Santa Clara County Fire, and our town work on the safety issues for our high school and for the new residents who'll be going into that new development, and with 155 new housing units. And this is also for the betterment of all folks in the area who will now have a safe passage for emergency vehicle entry and exit and a separate pedestrian and bike route to the school from Route 9, which Summer Hill has agreed to help fund, both on their site as well as on the high school property. Really good collaboration and sense of community engagement. Note, though, the pedestrian and bike passage along the western perimeter of the new housing will only be gated and only opened at the beginning and the end of the school day by the high school staff. This is a very good collaboration for all impacted by this development. However, I would suggest that to reduce noise to residents who will be in this new development and live very near with their proposing as the bike path on the Summer Hill site, that the bike and pedestrian path instead be on the eastern border and fenced all the way from Route 9, Los Gatos-Saratoga Road, to Pleasant Street, and therefore could be open all the time, being further from the housing and therefore being quieter for the residents there. And it would provide easier access for events on campus or to allow folks to travel to or from Main Street to Route 9 in either direction. Besides reducing noise and making it more convenient for both students and local citizens in the area to travel, it eliminates the cost for the school staffing to manage the gate because the proposal was that the gate would be locked and unlocked when there are times for people going to and from school. So having that long passageway between Pleasant and Los Gatos-Saratoga Road gives an open passageway for everyone to be able to conveniently travel. Please provide direction to the town staff to work with both the developer and the district for this solution. Thanks, and more citizens will benefit, and the net operating cost will be less for everyone. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Figo. I appreciate it. This was a topic that came up in a community discussion event that I held, and there was a lot of interest in creating secondary access to the high school. And I was very careful not to offer any opinions on that particular topic because it'll be coming before the council. I would wonder if you'd be willing to provide those ideas in writing because I think those ideas will become relevant to the application for development that's going on at that time, and it would be really helpful to understand all of the ideas that the community has.
I can do that, and I'll also include a map that would plot this out, as well as the narrative that goes with it.
Great, thank you.
And submit it to town staff, or?
Yeah, that would be best.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gus Hu.
La, 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 la. I just want to make sure that I audition for backup singer. Okay, oh yeah, put my Batman hat on. I'm here as a representative. I gotta read the book. There rang out the noisiest ear-splitting squeaks from the egg that he sat on for 51 weeks. A thumping, a bumping, a wild, alive scratching. "My egg!" shouted Horton. "My egg, why, it's hatching." Okay, oops. I'm here to talk about 2026 World Cup. I know you guys heard it from me before, but I am passing out the little pictures to the community to try to get some support for it. I just want to make sure that you know that I'm, you know, what I'm trying to do. And I'll leave you some pictures. Just, you know, I'm trying to, it says, "Help Adopt a World Cup", and I'll leave that for you. Trying to think, like, I know there's a lot going on in the world. 2025, I'm working on that project, and this is 2026, which is my fun project. And I'm not the best public speaker, as you know. One other thing, I read the softer, the grass artificial field that people want all grass. I'm more opposed, I mean, I'd rather have artificial grass because it's easier to maintain and no potholes and stuff like that. Other thing was, I saw community, country highlights, but that's a different project. Okay, that's it for me. Any questions? Like, good.
No, but thank you. You put a smile on our faces. I mean that in a good way. Or did he use up his time? Can he come back?
Trouble I'm probably causing you.
No, no troubles. That's very kind. Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Lindley.
Good evening. This evening, I wanted to speak about a topic that's a concern of mine: censorship. George Washington, our first president, warned, "If freedom of speech is taken away, then dumb and silent we may be led, like sheep to the slaughter." The Babylon Bee is a group of comedians who use satire to make us laugh out loud about curtain events. I have read from one of their funny articles while speaking to the town council. Thinking back to that night, some people didn't know that what I was saying was funny because they were oblivious to the information I was divulging, information that was being censored. Some of those who heard me speak were left silent and dumb and didn't know what to do. What you don't know can hurt you. How will you know and how will you know when and how to act if you don't know what's really going on? How will you protect yourself? Today, politicians and corporate executives are trying to shut down our free speech. They even want to shut down satire and what they say is misinformation, like the entertaining Babylon Bee and Mercury News and the Los Gatos newspapers. This would include Saturday Night Live, right? And all late-night comedy shows? But isn't this exactly what George Washington warned us about? Censorship is everywhere, and sadly, many people aren't getting both sides of a debate because they don't know where to look. You must use the Brave Browser instead of Google, or you will never find that information that the person who thinks differently than you already has. You must use Rumble instead of YouTube, and you must use Telegram instead of Facebook. Those other companies censor. I have seen people here in Los Gatos, mostly women or men acting like women, cry like a baby and go on to commit crimes because they wanted to shut down the speech of other neighbors. These people don't know the rights we share as Americans. These rights do not come from politicians or any person. These rights were given to us from God. Our United States Constitution declares this as self-evident. It is a bigot who believes that only their beliefs matter and no other side should be heard. There is a woman in Los Gatos stealing newsletters from her neighbors because the information is what she determined to be false or hateful. What if her neighbor agreed with the newsletter's message? Who is this woman to determine what information is appropriate for her neighbor? It is crucial to have all the information in order to debate any issue. It is very important that we have the information, excuse me, that we have the freedom to speak about anything, or else the tyrant will not let you speak about him if it is not in good judgment. The very reason freedom of speech, freedom to assemble, freedom of the press, and freedom of religion, and freedom to petition are under the First Amendment is that without our ability to communicate with each other in truth, we could lose our country to communism. We must be allowed to freely meet with each other, to freely speak our grievances, to freely investigate and to freely report accurately what we discover. If the tyrant's feelings are hurt, too bad.
I've got to ask you to wrap it up, Lindley.
We must say no to censorship. Only the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth will set us free. This is what I intend to tell. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Falterzak, and it's our last speaker. If anybody wants to speak to us, please fill out a card.
Good evening, council members. I'm just here tonight to state an opinion. I'm here because I've been reading about an organization that wants current council members to resign or have them booted out due to requirements by the state of California regarding adding new housing. And I want to say that I don't believe that the current council is to blame. In my opinion, housing issues here, they're severe now because no less than 40-plus years ago, the NIMBY actions by past council members have allowed us to get to this point. I've witnessed this in the town since the early '80s. You know, the town against granny units, against secondary dwelling units or small pre-existing duplexes, whatever you might want to call them. And I think our 40 years of not allowing responsible growth has taken us to the point where the state is now slapping the town's hands. They're slapping our hands. And unfortunately, we probably deserve it, but the blame doesn't go on the current council. It goes on 40 years of inaction and, I think, less than necessary housing growth. We've just been too tight. We've been too often, almost like the policy has been delay, deny, and hope you die, just go away. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Falterzak. Do we have any virtual hands on Zoom that wish to speak? There are no hands raised on Zoom. Last chance for anyone to come forward with a speaker card. See no one come forward, I am going to close verbal communications, and we'll move to other business, which is our first item, which is item number six, and that is multi-tenant civic center monument signage. Welcome, Ms. Burnham.
Mayor, good evening. Mayor, council, Nicole Burnham, Director of Parks and Public Works. This item is requesting you to authorize the creation of a new capital improvement project for signage for the Civic Center campus and the associated budget action to support it. On May 21, at the budget hearing, you took two actions related to signage at the Civic Center campus. One of them is underway, and you should see templates of that coming in the next couple of weeks that we'll be sharing with you. But the second one, and that is like map-based campus wayfinding. I'm standing in a parking lot. This building's in front of me. What's in that building? The second item that we were directed to consider and pursue related to what we raised, was raised as monument signage. So the action tonight is requesting to authorize us to go ahead and move forward with that work, to work with Hunt, our sign, townwide sign design firm that has done all of the downtown wayfinding, to allow us to move forward with this project. Happy to answer questions, but we didn't want to put it on consent because we want to make sure everyone's clear on the path we were following.
Okay, thank you for the report. I'm looking to my council members to see if they have questions. I see no questions at this time. I'm going to open public comment. We do have two speaker cards at this time, so I am going to call Kim Snyder. Please come forward.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name's Kimberly Snyder. I'm the Executive Director for New Museum Los Gatos, as many of you know. First off, I want to thank the town for your continued investment and support in the museum. All of us at Numu really value this partnership. I'm here tonight in regards to item number six to support a multi-tenant civic center monument sign. Earlier this year, the museum requested the town council to allocate funding in support of a monument sign to increase the museum's visibility at the Civic Center. From this request, funds were allocated to the Civic Center wayfinding program, which was resulting in the creation of a series of maps that will be installed at strategic locations around the Civic Center. Forgive me, I say Civic Center so many times in this speech. While these maps will be a great resource for those who have already made their way onto the Civic Center campus, it will not do much good for those walking on the sidewalk or driving on the street, which was the original purpose of the museum's proposal. This past year, we welcomed over 6,500 visitors, 30% from Los Gatos, 25% from San Jose, and the remaining from out of the area. By attracting out-of-town visitors, the museum produces indirect income for many businesses in the town, encouraging folks to come and stay and play in Los Gatos. However, these museums, these visitors are having a challenging time finding the museum. Nearly weekly, we receive feedback from our visitors that they had a hard time finding the museum because there is no visible signage. The museum supports the creation of a multi-tenant civic monument sign. However, the museum requests that's a part of these proposals that there be a sign dedicated to the museum that's visible to the street and that our current sign that was covered by the Veterans Memorial be relocated on Pageant Way or at a more visible location. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I think this is an important thing for people to know about the museum. I'm wondering, have you discussed the two ideas that you presented with? Have you discussed those with staff?
So we discussed, we were brought in for the maps, and we gave feedback for the maps, and I sent over some of the proposals for the signage, but we didn't really get much further than that. And then we talked about the monument sign we saw on the consent or on the agenda, so we decided to come to the meeting tonight.
And does the monument sign incorporate your feedback?
So it'll be, our name, I'm assuming, will be on the monument sign. I don't know what the exact proposal will be, but I'm assuming it's similar to like a shopping center that will have all the tenants listed from the document. But what the museum requests is something separate that's for the museum, so something that's on the building that says our name. When we originally had the new museum, Los Gatos, that was on Main Street, it was installed before the Veterans Memorial was erected. And now that the Veterans Memorial is there, it really covers the sign. So we'd love for that to be moved to a location where it can be seen and/or, in addition, have a sign that's on the building that's visible from the street that you can see where that you know where the museum is.
Okay, Vice Mayor, continue. And that's going to be followed by Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, and so are you expressing a preference for relocating the existing sign or having a new sign?
That's a really good question. I would say I'd like to explore both options with staff and see which one makes most sense with the aesthetic of the Civic Center. That's what I would like to pursue.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Yeah, not to get too into the weeds here. It sounds like offline conversations to come. But so where would you like the, because I totally hear what you're saying with the sign getting covered. Where would you like a sign to be on your building?
So we talked about it being on Pageant Way, facing kind of the parking lot. The original proposal, we wanted it on the far left of the building, but because the Friends of the Library occupy that space, we thought it might be confusing because they're actually in that area. But really, the museum's front facade is really covered by, you have the redwoods, and then you have the Veterans Memorial. So there's really not a place on the space that we occupy to put that sign. It would have to be either left or on Pageant.
Right, okay, that's kind of what I had thought. So hopefully, this, the new monument sign does help.
Yeah, I think the monument sign will help. I think, at the very least, that original signage has to be moved because you can't really see it behind the Veterans Memorial. That makes sense.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julie McCalliffe.
Thank you for this evening. I've been on the board for a couple of years and now currently President of Numu. And reiterate what Kimberly said. The signage, I think, is wonderful. We do not have a sign that says Los Gatos Civic Center, nor the different offices. But we need a sign, and even the sign that's on the Pageant Way, you will not see that. You do not see that at night. And when we have events, as Kimberly said, we had quite a few events, and it is always people cannot find where we are. And we are a art institution. We bring in the history. There's so much that Numu has to offer that I do think that we deserve to have a sign that you can see from the Main Street and from the park area, which would be sort on the left. The Friends of the Library is on one side. Either we could be and have it different and not in small prints, which we do have a picture of what we had come up with years ago. I'm not quite sure why we never put that sign up, but I would hope that we would have your support in trying to get a sign that you can see so that when people come to Los Gatos, which we can tell we are continuing to grow and have wonderful exhibitions, that they can find Numu. So we do, I'm asking that you will consider helping us get a sign that is visible from the street, the Main Street. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Questions?
Nope, sorry. Next speaker, Leaf ago. Come back up.
I promise I'm not going to be up here too much more often. I agree with the comment that Kimberly made, in particular that there needs to be signs around town letting people know that there is a museum in town. I've had friends and relatives visiting, and they were not aware that we had a museum in town. And I think by having sign at, and I know we're going to do some parking signs later, electronic, but to have at North Santa Cruz and Main Street, at University and Main Street, giving directions to where the Numu museum is, and also because it's difficult to see a sign on the building here at Numu, across the street, have a sign with an arrow directing you to where they're located. I think that would be very helpful for visitors and even for local residents to refamiliarize themselves with where we are as a really historic community with a museum that's worth visiting. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Ins.
Everything's going great. I talk a lot about the homeless. I'm actually representing the, I'm a community organizer for the Los Gatos Creek. You know, it started with the homeless, you know, reach the creek with respect. They're all doing really well. I'm amazed that, you know...
Joseph, I...
I'm sorry.
Are you talking about item number six, which has...
I'm probably out of order. And I'm not, I'm not, again, I'll come back.
Yeah, you would have to be talking about item number six, which is signage.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm late.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. Do we have any hands on Zoom on this item? There are no hands raised on Zoom. All right, would anybody else like to come forward on item number six, which is signage for the Numu? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close public comment and go back to my council members. Councilmember Ista?
Thank you. I do have a question for staff. I know that tonight's item is about the monument sign, and I thought in the wayfinding that was already underway, and I thought it said in the staff report that there would be wayfinding to Numu, or it would be, there would be wayfinding in the town to the Civic Center, and it would include Numu? Is that correct?
That is correct. So we are currently in the process of implementing the downtown wayfinding and signage program that was, has been well underway for a number of years. It is in construction. The signs are being fabricated. We should see placement of them this fall, and they do include signs throughout the town that will include direction to do in addition, or to the museum in addition to other key locations.
Okay, great, to follow up, because that's what I thought. I mean, it's very helpful to get people to the Civic Center, and then when they get to the Civic Center, finding what they want. And so I'm glad that Numu is called out specifically. We still have the issue that the monument sign will address is when somebody gets to the general amorphous area of the Civic Center, they can find each thing. I totally sympathize with Numu. I mean, I love the Veterans Memorial. Before that went in, there was a very clear, visible sign to Numu that you could see from the street. And just unfortunately, this Veterans Monument happens to completely, pretty much eclipse that sign. And so that sign essentially doesn't exist anymore. So I don't know how we can add that or how we can work with that, but I do think part of the wayfinding also needs to be that the building's labeled. that the building's labeled. And I don't want to add on too much to this, but I do know the evening that we had our send-off for our town manager, there were people who had never been to these council chambers before from other communities, and they had a hard time finding council chambers. And, you know, I know high school students have a hard time. So at some point, we may need to look at just better signage all around on each of our, even, the map will be helpful, but I think we also need each entry to be more readable because our, our council chamber sign isn't backlit or anything, right? It's just kind of dark metal on kind of dark brick. And it's beautiful, and it's subtle, and it's super low contrast, and not very eye-catching. So I don't know if that's outside of the scope of what we're talking about, but I think, and some thoughts about how do we identify each of the entries once people figure out where they should be walking.
I know interim manager May have some thoughts on this because she was with us when we did the stakeholder site walk. But we definitely discussed that, and we discussed that need right now. And that's out of the scope of what we have currently planned. So I think our hope is to get installed what you've asked us to do, which is the campus mapping and then a monument sign. And we can talk with Numu about the building signage. I think when we talked, they were with us on the site walk when we talked about campus signage. And I think we just haven't really found the right location for, to relocate the letters. But we'll continue to plug away at that. But I think, I have a feeling this is going to be something that evolves over time, that will continue to need us kind of working on it.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'm super grateful that this is already in front of us. I think this was an idea only a few months ago of the monument sign specifically. And so I think it's great that we're already talking about this. Just a couple of comments specifically on that. One is, I think it just sounds great. I'm excited to see what you all come up with. I think the big things that I think are obvious but worth stating are, I think the important part is making sure that the sign is large enough that it can be seen by cars and pedestrians, cars that are, you know, will be moving somewhat quickly, that they can see it and know exactly where they need to go. And then it's positioned in the correct way that it really directs people to the Civic Center. With that, I think, if at all possible, and this might make the, you know, I think it is at least worth evaluating lighting the sign at night because, you know, our meetings happen in the evenings. And so making sure people can find us, I think, is important. Numu has events in the evening, you know, all those sorts of things. And then, you know, I don't know if this is a good idea or not, but I think it's worth considering not having permanent lettering on there. I mean, at least for tenants. Not that, you know, Friends of the Library are likely to move. Hopefully, they don't move anytime soon. But if, you know, there were changes to who is located here, I think that would be good. I think probably not as important for something like the library and town. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Reni.
So I'll start by disagreeing a little bit with Councilmember Moore. We were talking about a monument sign years ago, probably before you were on council. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say thank you for, you know, this just being three months ago. I'd say, I don't want to add, what I'm hearing is I don't want to add to the project because I want to get it done. Because we were talking about this multiple years ago, and it's another one of those things that's a little frustrating to me that it never actually occurs. I am supportive of the idea of figuring out how to move the sign, the Numu sign on the building to someplace that's more visible because, you know, I was also involved in approving the Veterans Memorial, and it was a compromise on where we ended up putting it. It was actually a very long process. It was one of the first things we talked about when I got on council ten years ago, and took a while to actually get executed. So it was somewhat of a compromise. And Numu at the time was saying, you know, well, please don't block our sign. And, you know, well, the best compromise was we blocked their sign. So I do think it's fair that we look at moving their sign. But as I hear you recommending, we don't want to add it to this project. And I don't want to add anything to this project that's going to slow it down. That was my original point, and I've been waiting for this for a number of years.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. So I wanted to understand the plan that's in the staff report as compared to the request from the museum leadership. Is, and what was in the motion that was made to provide a sign for the museum by December of 2025? Is it, does this monument sign substitute for an individual sign for the museum?
I think it is part of the package. And as we listen to the, this is part of the reason why we wanted to make sure we had this discussion, as we listen to the, the meeting itself and the video of the meeting from May 21st, that motion was made, and then there was a lengthy discussion about monument signage and where it should be placed and what it should look like. And there was a lot of discussion about how it probably wouldn't be appropriate to have a monument sign that only reflects the needs of one tenant, and that it would be a broader sign that addressed the needs of all of the tenants. And so from what we heard, that's where we landed on moving forward with the, with the monument sign, that it would address everyone's needs.
So, okay, so if I understand this correctly, staff interpreted the motion to create a sign for Numu by December 2025 as being satisfied by creating a monument sign?
That's correct.
And could you explain to us what a monument sign is and how that would help people with the objective of visitors finding the museum who are not familiar with the town?
Yeah, and so I think the definition of monument sign is one we're going to explore as we move forward because I think it probably means something different to everybody. But the intent in our, as we're considering it, is a, is signage that is near East Main Street that shows the tenants that are located in the Civic Center, that you're very clearly have arrived at the Civic Center, and here are the things that you can find here. And then from there, you get to parking, and that's when you would have the, the map-based signage that shows you where Numu is on campus.
Okay, so the map-based signage, what form would that be? And where would that be?
We've identified three locations. They'll be pedestal signs near the parking lots that are around the Civic Center campus at the head of each parking lot. And I think we're still, we're still deciding locations, but you will see concepts of that signage within a week or two.
I may want one more. I just, it sounds like maybe this needs to come back to council once again because it's not clear to me that this will satisfy the motion that we made, which said that Numu would have a sign by December 2025. And the clarification that we had tonight from leadership of Numu, that that sign needs to help visitors find the museum, be dedicated to the museum, and be visible from the street. And so it would, I think we're going to need to look at this again because this verbal description of a monument sign is not leaving me with a sense that it's going to satisfy that particular need. So.
No, and I appreciate that comment. And again, that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure we came and discussed this tonight. The, during the discussion on the 21st of May, there was specific mention of a monument sign. And there was specific reference made to the signage that is like at the Nob Hill Shopping Center. That does allow, you know, provides the name of the asset at the shopping center. And then, you know, all of the tenants are listed in there, and they're out near the street where everyone can clearly see what they're going to find when they come into that parking lot.
Yeah, thank you. I just would appreciate maybe, maybe the mayor scheduling a follow-up on this because we're getting close to the time where we may not meet this deadline of 2025 unless we know what this thing actually looks like.
Okay, I'm going to hear from Councilmember Reni. But as far as a follow-up, that might make me a motion to continue. But I'd like to hear from Councilmember Reni, followed by Councilmember Moore.
All right, so two questions then in this. Our usual process that I would assume would occur, this, this is only asking us to set aside $50,000 and start a capital project. Usually, the next step in the process is staff goes and works on it and then brings back something for us to approve or ask for changes. So I don't see how delaying starting the capital project helps anything but delay the project because normally, we would bring, bring it back with what Councilmember Hudes was, was asking for, I believe. Second, so I guess, is that a correct assumption?
That's a correct assumption, and we did document that in the memo. It's actually memorialized that we will be back.
And then second question, which I guess we would cover when it comes back, but I'm curious now. What are the tenants that we're considering that are part of this? Are we considering Los Gatos Adult Rec Center as, as part of the tenant? And the library as part of the tenants? Because they're sort of on that area there?
Certainly, library. And I think this is, these kinds of questions are the exact reason why our scope also includes outreach and stakeholder engagement. Because I think people are going to care about this. Clearly, you know, this is going to be an important thing, and I know there's going to be a lot of opinions. So we ask that Hunt includes stakeholder engagement as part of this so we can have these conversations. I do want to mention that interim manager Nomura has her hand up as well.
Ms. Nomura.
Thank you so much, Mayor and councilmembers. I just want to mention that I do think if you have feedback for today that you would like us to rather than move forward with a multi-tenant monument sign, to then focus on a Numu-specific signage based on the comments and the comments from council tonight. That would be helpful direction. I think prioritizing which one you would like us to work on first will be helpful.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I, from my understanding of the May discussion, the monument sign is exactly what I intended when I was voting for that. I think the monument sign does satisfy the motion from, from my interpretation of it. So I would like to move forward with the monument sign and follow, you know, the timeline that Councilmember Reni and the director described of doing design and community outreach and then coming back to the council with options on this. I, I don't know what else we would do. I think that the only other part of this that I'm understanding is that that makes a lot of sense, is moving Numu's signage at some point. I think I'm two thumbs up for that, but it's sounding like that will delay getting the monument sign done. And that seems to be counterproductive to creating more visibility for the entire, for everyone who exists on the campus. So I think getting the monument sign done sooner than later is, is, you know, should be the priority. And I don't know what a follow-up would be. You know, again, I think this makes sense. We say, yes, sounds good, move forward with the monument sign for, you know, all tenants, including, you know, Numu, Civic Center, et cetera. Come back with the design, and then we would talk about what the sign would look like. I don't know what, yeah, so that, that completely satisfies my understanding of the motion.
Councilmember Risto, followed by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, yeah. I mean, I, I want to focus on the monument sign as well because when somebody arrives at the Civic Center, if they park in the, on Main Street, they may not know where the library is or where the police department is. You know, how do you navigate that? And we don't have a map, and we don't have a list of what's there. When, I have two questions, well, one comment. I do think having it lit will be important. So when we get the design back, you know, hopefully, that's not a horribly difficult thing with LEDs or whatever. But I think it's going to be really important that it's visible at night. And I think when we talk about the three locations, it sounded like you mentioned the two parking lots on each side. And hopefully, the other will be toward the Main Street side by the sidewalk so that either if people park two blocks away down the street and walk here, or just walk here, they will not have to go around and walk into a parking lot to go look for a sign. So, you know, given that there's three, it sounds like that would work out. In terms of the permanence, Councilmember Moore brought up a good point. And the only thing I thought about, I don't think any tenants will leave, although ultimately, the police department may if it moves over to the operations building. So in terms of the design of the sign, it probably needs some level of flexibility where if a particular tenant changes, I'd like to know how difficult it is to change the map because we don't want to spend $50,000 if we have to change one tenant. But I, I feel like moving the Numu sign that's already on their building to a more visible place should be a separate part from this monument sign. I think regardless of what happens to Numu's lettering, we still need the monument sign. And if the lettering movement becomes problematic or finding the location is difficult, in the meantime, if we have a monument sign, people will still find Numu. And, or at least they'll know which part of our building to walk to and see it. So I don't want to get hung up on that either. I would rather just move forward with this monument sign as described.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Moore brought up a point that I wanted to, you know, as an assertion, which I wanted to turn around to a question to staff. And that is, would moving the current sign be an impediment to creating the monument sign?
Can you define new, the current sign, meaning the lettering on the building?
The Numu sign, which I, I think is on the Pageant Way side.
I think the, the only impediment to that is figuring out how those, it's affixed to the building and figuring out if we can move it without damaging the building, and then how we re-fix it again. So I need to have conversations with folks about that. But it's definitely something we can look into. And we did have some initial discussion about it a month or so ago.
Okay, that's why I think some drawings would be helpful. So I'm not suggesting that we delay this input or motion. And this is a report back to us. And so, you know, I'm happy to make a motion to move it forward. And so if it's appropriate, I can do that.
Yes, go ahead.
So I move to create a new capital improvement project and fund the design and construction of a monument sign for Civic Center campus in alignment with council's previous direction. And I would add that that direction includes having a sign for Numu by December of 2025.
Second.
All right, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Any comments? Otherwise, I'm going to call the question. All in favor? Passes unanimously.
Can I also ask for a motion to authorize the budget transfer of $5,000?
Yes, I move to transfer the appropriate budget amount of $50,000.
Vice Mayor?
Second.
Okay, I'll call the question on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Right, moving on to item number seven, which is a new town event for fall of 2025. Ms. Ren, we're eager for your report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for taking the time to consider this this evening. Community vitality and community events remained and adopted ongoing strategic priority for the town. So considering this, staff is coming forward with this discussion tonight regarding the expansion of Screen on the Green into a broader community celebration that concludes with an outdoor movie night. The staff report provides a brief synopsis and history of our town's annual events. And the two that we're highlighting in this discussion are a little confusing. It's Spring into Green and Screen on the Green. Do my best to keep those straight. Spring into Green is our sustainability-focused event. It takes place in April and near Earth Day. And it actually was, it was created to replace our annual garage sale that we used to have every year once our trash contract changed. And then we used to actually do a mail-out letter, newsletter for Keep Los Gatos Beautiful Month that was a culmination of all the events in town. And so as we started to modernize and think about how we could have a broader reach to the community, we created the Spring into Green. And then the Screen on the Green is our annual movie night in September where we host a family-friendly movie at Oak Meadow Park. So as Spring into Green has evolved, it's gained popularity with our community stakeholders, and many of whom's main goals are not driven by sustainability or by Earth Day. But regardless, their work is really important in the community. So we've opened up the doors and rolled out the welcome mat and had everybody participate in that event. So what we're reaching now is we're reaching our capacity because it is alongside Farmer's Market. And so we have more interest in folks that are wanting to come forward and be a part of that event. So as that's taken place, staff has kind of worked to think about how we can accommodate the interests of all of the groups. So as that's taken place, staff has kind of worked to think about how we can accommodate the interests of all of the groups and have the opportunity for our community to feel celebrated. As such, it occurred to us that we could expand Screen on the Green as a community celebration that's focused on art, music, dance, food, culture, community services, and similar stakeholder ideas that would conclude with a family movie night. Staff would should the council approve this, staff would work with our community partners, including our boards and commissions, our stakeholders, our service providers, our youth groups, our adult groups, and just kind of reach out as we do for our other events to see who would like to participate in that. Given that the expansion would increase the event's budget and require a significant amount of staff time and lead time to coordinate, we're here to discuss it with you tonight to understand if that's something that you'd like us to build into the budget for fiscal year 25, 26. And then we would start that outreach. There are some alternatives in your staff report if you'd like to consider those as well. And then I'd like to introduce Jessica Urteil. She's here with me this evening. She's our events and marketing coordinator, and she's really the incredible staff member that does the bulk of the planning and coordinating for all of our town events as well as our special event permits. So she's here to help support the conversation. This concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for introducing Jessica. She's been very outstanding, as you are. All right, questions from council members? None. I am going to open public comment. Mr. Fugot, do I need a card from you? No? Okay. All right. I don't have any speaker cards. Is there a virtual hand on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Right, I am going to close public comment and go back to my council members for comments. Motion, Councilmember Risto, followed by Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank staff for evaluating this really fun event. I mean, Screen on the Green has been going on for a really long time. I think I went to the first one. And I love it, but I and I with time, events change. And I think the two balancing things are, one is we can see the huge engagement at Spring Into Green in a very limited space. So the idea of expanding an event like that into a much larger venue like Oak Meadow is really exciting to me. Also, you know, as you pointed out, and I've observed, almost all the elementary schools have movie night now. And so the crowds, for a variety of reasons, have really fallen off at Screen on the Green. I mean, it used to just be packed. And so maybe that's a signal that, you know, people are looking for something else. And so I appreciate this kind of pivot. You know, it could be like a big town picnic or whatever, but it would give the opportunity for all kinds of stakeholder groups to participate that are not related to sustainability where we have a much bigger venue. And one of the things I was thinking about is, you know, July 4th, really Jessica has elevated that in the last couple of years, along with he Monica. And the thing is, we have jumpy houses, we have all kinds of things, and we've got the train, and we've got the merry-go-round, and almost nobody is in town. So those of us that are here enjoy it, but I know that in that venue and with similar types of activities and enhanced activities, this could just really be a wonderful community gathering. One thought I had was, I like the idea of keeping the movie for the end, at least for the first year. And then if it turns out that we have a huge turnout all day, and when it's movie time, there's 15 people that stay, then we know for the next year, drop the movie. I also really support something that's very family friendly. You know, if there's dance or other activities going on, that'd be family friendly, not turn into, you know, a big music event with a band and with alcohol or other things. We have enough of those. So I like this as it's proposed, and I'm super supportive of it. So I'll let other council members speak before I make a motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you. Yeah, I think the fact that you all are bringing this forward is a big testament to what a great team we have. Events are not easy to do, and the fact that you all are saying, how can we do a bigger event is a testament to how much you love this community. So thank you for that. I think this is great. I think this is an excellent idea. I love the idea of a broader community celebration. You know, I think most of us were at Screen on the Green, and it was a great event. But again, like you said, I think, you know, since COVID and since Netflix and all these things, I think, you know, a movie outside is a little bit less novel than it perhaps used to be. So I have a number of, you know, sort of ideas and things to throw out there. I think you all are the pros and will figure this out in the best way possible. But I think one thing to think about and look at is look at other communities that do these sort of like larger events like this. Some of the ones that that I have been to and have enjoyed are like Grass Valley does a really cool, they do sort of a much larger version of a fall Halloween event that is like community parade and costume contest sort of thing. That's very much fall Halloween inspired. Lots of communities do like sort of big block parties, right? Like a shut down the street, do a block party. And I think that can incorporate well with, you know, tableers and things like that. The, you know, the thing, the only sort of hesitation that I had reading the whole staff report, which was great, was I don't think it should just be like a tabling event like Spring on the Green. I think it really has to have elements that bring people there, both, you know, for the whole family, for kids, but also for parents, right? Because I'm sure, you know, Screen on the Green is is great for the kids that are there. They're having a fun time. They're watching the movie and the parents are, you know, kind of sitting there for a few hours watching a movie that maybe they're, you know, eh, on. So I think having elements that bring, you know, all kinds of people to the space is important. With that, I think, and I think this is just, you know, idea of food for thought, no bad ideas in a brainstorm. The, I think Oak Meadow might present difficulties for doing a larger event. You know, when you go to Oak Meadow on a Saturday, I, you know, recently held an event there. Parking was a nightmare. There it's just a very small parking lot, and there's not a lot of parking in the surrounding areas. I think that's totally a, you know, a solvable problem for a larger event, but something to think about. When I think about, you know, sort of the favorite town events in, you know, the past few years, when I was running, one of the things that I heard all the time was people love the promenades, right? The block party sort of thing. It's not, you know, as it gets later in the evening, it becomes less and less family oriented. But I think that the promenades were super popular anyway, where you can have that sort of like walkability, incorporate businesses, it's good for everybody kind of thing, I think, is good. And so, yeah, I think, you know, one of the most important parts about this will be doing outreach to all these stakeholders like you described and seeing what people want. But I think this is a great idea, and I love your sort of, you know, art, music, dance, culture, food. Great, excellent, super excited for this. So thank you.
So I'll add a couple of comments. I liked what Councilmember Moore had stated because what I was thinking is I wanted to make it a more inclusive event. We always like inclusivity for the whole community to enjoy. So I wouldn't want it just for kids. I want to bring all the age groups together. So I thought that was a really good idea because I was on that same wavelength. However, if you don't do it at Oak Meadow Park, I don't know how you would incorporate the movie that Councilmember Risto had said doing at the end, unless perhaps we did it at the Civic Center. But I do like the idea of changing this up. Screen on the Green, it's, we need to change it. Things have changed. So with that, I'm going to look to the Vice Mayor for his comments.
Yeah, thank you. And I really enjoyed the the event the other day. Highlights to me were the participation of the DEI Commission and their engagement with the community and with the kids as well. Thought it was a really great opportunity. And if there's a way that with this new all-community celebration, we can do even more of that, I think that would be, I think that'd be really good. One question I had was on the budget. So I didn't really understand because it sounded like alternative to, we were going from two events to one. But then the fiscal impact said it would, that would cost $8,500 more than the current budget. And so is that because we're anticipating the event to be so much larger or and 85 isn't, 8,500 isn't a huge amount, but just was curious about that.
Thank you for that question. That's a great question. So we really were taking a stab in the dark at what the budget would be. We spent about $11,000 on Spring Into Green. So what we were thinking is it costs us 25 to do the screen and the AV 2,500 for, or Screen on the Green. So we were looking for the additional 8,500 to bring it up to that 11,000 if we were to expand the event. I think this conversation is amazing that you're having right now. I love it because this is actually where we went. We went in about 17 circles as we developed this staff report because first we thought, you know, do we recommend getting rid of Screen on the Green? But it is such a beloved event and it and it has a special place in a lot of people's hearts. So from a staff perspective, we didn't feel like it was our place to recommend its removal. So then our thought was we really can't do two events. It's just, it's too much work in the season. We would be open to doing just one event. The challenge with Screen on the Green is it has to be in an evening. And then we don't do, except for 4th of July, if it falls on a weekend, we really don't use Oak Meadow Park for large community events. We've actually told lots of folks no because it's used so heavily by our community on Saturdays and Sundays that we don't want to take that away from folks for birthday parties and things like that. So we don't necessarily allow events that take over more than half the park on the weekends or even sometimes less than that, depending on what it entails. So a couple of other directions you all could go if you wanted to see this at the Civic Center. That's an option. Then another thing that occurred to me as we were, as I was listening to all of you, is that staff could provide maybe three options. We could come back to you and we could do a better, like a better budgeting of what those three options would look like, and we could come back in a, and, you know, a couple of weeks or couple of meetings and then present those to you. And if you all have input on location, kind of timing and day, our initial thought was to make this transition like kind of smooth, like try it with the movie and then maybe let the movie go. But if you all are ready to see a whole new event, staff is definitely open to support that, and we can come back to you with options if you don't want to make those decisions on the dais tonight. Councilmember Moore?
I think that's a great idea. I think three or, you know, three-ish options would be perfect. I think we do, we do well with options.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just one more input, which I think we're headed in a good direction. It seems like Oak Meadow Park may have some constraints in terms of how big an event we can do there, not because of the park, but because of getting people to there. And so maybe we could look at even going bigger and thinking about off-site parking or shuttle, bicycle valet, or you know, some other way of getting people to Oak Meadow Park. It's a wonderful treasure, but I do think that if we were to go to an even somewhat bigger event than what we've been doing, we're going to have a lot of frustrated people. Things got a little angry in the parking lot there the other night, so.
Thank you for that question, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to comment that if we did it at Oak Meadow Park, I mean, I like doing it maybe closer to downtown because then you get people frequenting our retail and our dining establishments. And don't we want to encourage that? If they're at Oak Meadow Park, you know, when they're done, they might go drive away and go home. But this way, if we kind of keep it centered, maybe next to, you know, at the Town Plaza, I think it'd be more beneficial for our community vitality in every way possible. Councilmember Moore followed by Councilmember Risto?
Yeah, I have a comment, but it looks like, Jessica.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
Yes, Jessica, go ahead. You might need a microphone so we can hear you?
The benefit of Oak Meadow for movie night was that it's enclosed. We did do on the Civic Center lawn when construction was happening. It was a little bit nerve wracking with the little ones, just because Main Street's right there and there's, we're going down the street, so.
Okay.
Also, Billy Jones had like a sweet element with the event too because they had the train running and the carousel.
All right, good points. Thank you. Councilmember Moore followed by Councilmember Risto?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think with the movie, you know, Oak Meadow does make sense. Oak Meadow is also very, very family oriented, I think. I think it's a very, you know, good place for kids to spend time. I think as if we are, you know, talking about, you know, a few options, I think that, you know, shouldn't it all be off the table? But I like the idea of, you know, exploring downtown. I think you could either do, you know, the Civic Center lawn and do something there. It's a, you know, really big space where you could have a lot of, you know, events. We have lots of town partners do great, great events there, you know. September was packed with one every single weekend. And then I think the other thing that's, that's, you know, maybe worth thinking about is if you were to use the Town Plaza, you could shut down Montebello and have, you know, the sort of tabling vendors there and the, you know, whatever programming events, et cetera, on the Town Plaza. So I think there's, I mean, again, y'all are the experts, but I think there's a ton of good options for locations that we could, you know, explore.
Councilmember Risto?
Thank you. I like the idea of three options where we explore all of the parameter space, like, you know, which one has parking issues, which one has, you know, more capacity? I think the Town Plaza, we've already demonstrated with Screen on the, with Spring Into Green that that is too small of a location, that we're looking at something, we need a bigger space. What I like about Oak Meadow is that people can, we might need to look at a shuttle or see what that would be. But in general, there's plenty of parking up and down the street, and a lot of people come there on the trail. People can walk or bike from downtown. People can get there a lot of different ways. And I will tell you, I I talk to people all the time, and for people that don't live downtown, they really feel like we're too downtown centric. They don't feel like they're part of Los Gatos. And so I think when we plan events, we sometimes want to do things that are more in the middle of town or in different locations. And so, you know, to me, Oak Meadow kind of strikes that chord where you could have food trucks or a little beer garden and a dance event. And, you know, we've got the the stage thing. Gisibo, thank you. Good heavens, I need a noun. You know, there's so much infrastructure there. You don't have to close a street. You don't have to set things up in front of other buildings. And I just think pulling people into a place where, in my mind, the whole point of this was to bring the community together. And there would be plenty of space and access then for food trucks or other things, jumpy houses, adult activity, you know, family activities. But I would like to see three different spaces evaluated, but from the viewpoint, I think the Civic Center is small. I will also say the other thing with the movie. So when I've been to Screen on the Green at the Civic Center, it's terrifying to have the street there. It's dark, kids are running around. But the other thing is there's cars going by all the time. There's lights, there's the uplight on the flag there. So one year I had a light bulb just shining into my eye while I tried to watch the movie with one eye. You know, it's not ideal for an outdoor movie. So if we're going to keep for the first year a movie, I think it really, that has to be taken into account to what makes sense. But again, I'm ready to adapt to anything if you can come up with three ideas. And then tell us what the pros and cons are of access, parking, capacity, what activities are suitable.
So I'm going to go to Councilmember Moore next. I think you're getting our direction. I don't know if you necessarily need a motion, but I think you're hearing the direction that we like three alternatives. Councilmember Moore?
Yeah, we're just gonna throw two other things out there, which is, I mean, I think those are all actually really, really good comments. So I think, you know, like you're saying, having different options on location, I think is good. I also think that, you know, the, for a large event like that, I think 11,000 is probably far too little money is what I'm thinking. And so I would, you know, as you evaluate options, I think be realistic and honest with budget. And I would be willing to spend, you know, I mean, the fact that that Screen on the Green, you know, one of our kind of big, we only do a few big events a year, only costs, you know, a few thousand dollars. I think we could do a little bit more here, and that's something I'd be willing to budget for. So, yeah, I think that that's totally legitimate. And then I think, again, as you're exploring all of these options, I think that makes a lot of sense. The Civic Center or Montebello Way or Town Plaza options might just have to not have the movie component. And so I think that we should, you know, again, be honest. And if we want to keep the movie, we do it at Oak Meadow. If we don't care so much about the movie, we can explore one of these other locations.
Okay, did you get enough direction from us? Councilmember Rennie, did you have your hand up? Councilmember Rennie?
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, staff usually likes to count noses on things. So I haven't said anything because Screen on the Green is not an event. I don't know that I've ever attended it. I frequently travel in September, so I didn't want to say get rid of it or not get rid of it because it's not something that I'm attached to. And so I didn't want to give much of an opinion, but, you know, listening to my fellow council members, it, you know, it sounds like maybe we're, we might be okay eliminating the movie or moving it or something. So I'm just giving my input that I have no particular attachment on this, that I'm just listening. and I'm just listening for the good ideas here. And I don't feel like I'm qualified to say whether to get rid of Screen on the Green or not.
I'll throw out one more comment then. You know, I grew up here. I went to the high school, raised my daughter here. And this is the first year I attended Screen on the Green. I'm ashamed to say that. So I didn't really have a particular affinity to it as well, although I enjoyed being there, this last event that we had. But I think for me, I really enjoyed having the tables there, like the DEI Commission, and seeing the kids go up and, you know, draw with their crayons. And then Parks had their frisbees there. And it was, it was fun. But again, that was more than just having a movie. And I think movies are on the way out. So I would prob, I may be open to just eliminating the movie altogether. But that's just one more comment. Does anybody else have comments or direction for, yes?
I just have a couple of things to add. So what I'm hearing is we'll come back with a menu of options for three locations, Oak Meadow Park, the Civic Center, and Town Plaza Park. We'll work up what that would look like if it's done alongside Farmer's Market versus on its own, so that we have the real estate of Montebello. Part of the reason why we haven't come forward sooner is we've never really changed the event's budget. It's been almost the same since I started here seventeen years ago. And we have very, like creatively, been playing with the budget, because everything else has gone up. And we've been able to save money on Screen on the Green, and staff does a lot of the work on their own. So it's a really great conversation, and I appreciate that we're having it. Because I think what we'll do is we'll come back with our full events budget. You can see where we're spending the money and how it goes. And then we can talk about what these events would look like from a budget perspective. And then you all can make the decision that feels right, if that's good for you.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, that completes our other business. So now we're going to move on to council manager matters. And I'll start with Councilmember Aristo.
Thank you. Gosh, going back two weeks. Oh, the Wednesday after the last council meeting, I attended the Van Meter Steam Night, which was, all of the elementary schools had their steam nights, which is STEM plus art. And there were just all kinds of fun activities that were, the theme was sustainability. There were middle school students and high school students there also, holding booths and helping the elementary kids explore different options. Our library was there. So there were flowers for native plantings. There were ways to make a little bee hotel. There was, high school students there were to make this slime that I used to make with my kids. So now I'm ready to pull out cornstarch and water and just start mushing that around. I recommend anybody who wants to relieve stress does that. And then on the twentieth, I did attend Screen on the Green. Did appreciate the tables from the Parks Commission, the library, the DEI Commission. And I will say, that's probably my twentieth Screen on the Green. So I never miss it, and I love it. And I'm just a sap for that. But I'm okay with things changing. On that weekend, I attended the Fiesta Day Arts, on and off, wonderful event put on by the Kiwanis. And Sunday evening, then, I attended the Los Gatos Music and Arts Gala. And Los Gatos Music and Arts puts on youth workshops in art. They not only put on Jazz on the Plaz, but they put together art and music education programs for youth and for adults of all ages. So I was happy to donate to their cause while we all dressed up in vintage garb. On the twenty-fourth, the Vice Mayor and I attended the Council Policy Committee meeting. And we'll have some things coming forward. But we were discussing commission attendance and kind of other updates to get our commission policies all kind of cohesive and in agreement. On the twenty-sixth, at the library, there was a meeting with an author who wrote a book about gratitude and happiness. And I changed my other plans just to attend it. And I remember years ago, someone telling me, you can't be grateful and unhappy at the same time. And so I think when we count our blessings, we can always find happiness. It was a really good talk there. And then on Saturday morning, I attended the Youth Citizen of the Year Award Ceremony, which is always inspiring. So these were four youth that were nominated by their mentors who are just really highly accomplished. And, well, the mayor can talk a little more about it, because she was there and awarded commendations on behalf of the town of Los Gatos. But for me, besides talking to the youth afterward, was talking to their parents. Because while each, each student was getting their award and talking and speaking, I was looking at the parents' faces and the sheer pride and love on their faces of watching these young people, you know, on the verge of adulthood, be recognized for accomplishments was really something. And then on Sunday, I attended the K-Cat Oktoberfest. So boy, talk about a family-friendly event. I mean, that did involve beer, but it also involved really fun music and dancing. And people of all ages were out there dancing. And K-Cat really put on a successful event. Saw people of all ages from all over town there. And then finally, over the past two weeks, I have met with a number of residents. Visited one who is looking at trying to find adjoining properties up at the end of two dead-end roads to put in Emergency Fire Road. Talked to another resident about flock cameras on private property, builder's remedy, a whole bunch of different issues. So, you know, as anybody who's written to me knows, if they want to meet with me and have a discussion, I am available and happy to come out and meet. Thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended Screen on the Green. I think all of the Commissions did a really great job. I loved the DEI Commission, was there both tabling it, and they sponsored the short film. I thought that was great. And just while we're on the topic of events, I think a lot of people in town probably imagine when we plan events and do events as a town, we have, you know, outside vendors and planners and people doing all these things. And it's really just Jessica with a cart and Monica running around in the parking lot and PPW staff making all the important logistics happen. I'm always impressed with how late and how much work that you all put in. So, so thank you. I attended the Valley Health Foundation Gala. The Valley Health Foundation supports county hospitals in Santa Clara County. And the big win that was being celebrated was the county purchasing Regional Medical Center, which is going to be huge for our community. That was a medical, a hospital that is owned by, currently owned by a private company that was basically, over the years, had really shrunk the services available there. And that's, you know, to residents in Eastside San Jose. And the county has taken a big step in purchasing that hospital. It's going to exacerbate the county's budget deficit a lot. So hopefully that doesn't impact us too much here. But, but I do think that's an important and necessary thing. Along with Councilmember Aristo, I attended the tail end of the United Against Hate Event organized by Philaki Phillips and AOW. And the, you know, along, that event happened at the library, and I wanted to acknowledge the, what a good job the library's done the past week with Ban Books Week, United Against Hate Week, and really making the library a very safe space for all members of our community. And just applaud them for that. Spent a while at the Los Gatos Art and Wine Festival, which is always a blast. I perhaps participated a bit too much in our local economy, purchasing earrings and things for my girlfriend. It was really nice, though. I am, I met with a number of residents and developers about some upcoming things. I think that a lot of the developments are kind of moving along. And there's a few things that I think will be coming up, you know, sooner than later. I am holding my monthly coffee this Friday morning at Los Gatos's newest brunch spot, Gardenia, which is really, really good. If you haven't been there, the food is great. I think they're opening up their dinner menu this week. And then the last thing is, we're now, you know, only thirty-five days from the election. So I'm sure people watching and tuning into this meeting are very civically engaged and are registered to vote and all of that. But just as a reminder, for college students, they need to re, if anybody moved at all since the past election, you have to register, re-register to vote. So help people in your lives get registered. Super, super important.
Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you, Mayor. I can't recall whether I reported it last time or not, but I also met with some of the residents that want to annex into Los Gatos and create an extra fire road between Foster and Aztec Ridge. I can't remember whether I reported that last time or not. Since the last meeting, for sure. I attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Risk Oversight Committee. I met with some of the NUMU Board to talk about things at NUMU. I dropped in and talked to the Los Gatos Rec Director. And I actually volunteered at the K-Cat Oktoberfest. I get to collect money, that was the fun part.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I was able to participate in all of the town events, the arts event, the Oktoberfest, the Screen on the Green, all of the things that have been happening at this time. It was absolutely terrific. Maybe I'll point out a couple other things that I did in addition to those. One was that I met with the superintendent of the high school district to discuss the option of a additional secondary access to the high school. And I held a discussion event, community discussion event, on managing congestion in Los Gatos. And we had a large number of people participate, and we covered three topics. One was beach cut-through traffic. The second was secondary access. And the third was wildfire, which is an evacuation route, which is kind of overarching on all of those. I wanted to share the results of that with town staff and our traffic engineers, as it looks like VTA is interested in collaborating on a study of some of the congestion issues as a follow-up to the meeting that we had with them a few weeks ago. And there are a number of new ideas about the, about what we could do about beach cut-through traffic that could get explored, particularly with taking an analytical and data-focused approach. So that was, that was, you know, very, very interesting. And then, of course, I participated in our meetings with our Los Gatos Thrives, which is planning another community workshop, this one called Designing the Community Center. And it's scheduled for October fourteenth at 5:00 PM and is open to the whole community. And welcome people to take out their pens and their pencils and their erasers and their magic markers and to come up with some conceptual designs for a new community center so that we can explore that more fully next year in a more formal process. So those are some highlights, thanks.
On September twentieth, I participated in the Screen and Green, Screen on the Green event at Oak Meadow. On the twenty-third, I met with the developers of Los Gatos Meadows. And on September twenty-fourth, as the newly-appointed board member for Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, I met with the executive director for a site tour of the facility. And it was so educational and informative. I really enjoyed that. On September twenty-fifth, I participated in a meeting of the West Valley Mayors and Managers, along with Chief Field. We received presentations on public safety and the VTA. On September twenty-sixth, I participated in a ribbon cutting for boba guys over at Old Town. On the twenty-eighth, I participated in Youth Park Day along with Councilmember Aristo, honoring four recipients of the Youth Citizen of the Year Award. We will see and hear more from them in December. They'll be at the parade with their whistles. And they were practicing last Saturday with Jackie Rose. And that was, it was a fun event. And on the twenty-ninth, they also attended Oktoberfest. So for that, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager for any manager matters. Ms. Nomura?
I'll have Nicole Burnham provide those to you.
Okay, Ms. Burnham?
Thank you. Three updates from us. Just a note on the heat emergency, stay safe. And friendly reminder, the library is a cooling center from ten AM to six PM if people need relief. There's also additional information on the town website